I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight, and I would like to recognize we do have our Chairman of our Cumberland County Commissioners tonight with us, Ms. Jeanette Council, and with her Commissioner Glenn Adams, and of course, our County Manager Amy Cannon. But I do appreciate them being here this evening. We also have with us tonight Pastor Michael Mathis of Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, Pastor Michael, if you'll come to the microphone, if everyone that can, please stand.
Wait a minute, I'm missing a commission.
(laughing).
(laughing).
I'm sorry.
Almighty God, once again, we acknowledge your sovereignty, and we're humbled always, Lord, by your loving kindness and your mercy that you continue to bestow upon each of us, including the town of Hope Mills. We are so grateful, oh God, for how you continue to pour out your kindness, and how in 2018, we saw so many wonderful things happen in this town, and we are grateful for that. And, Lord, we're forever reminded of our frailty. And so, Lord, we acknowledge our frailty, and we call on you, Lord, to forgive us of anything that may be a hindrance to your move here, and as our council listen to you for wisdom and guidance according to the agenda. We thank you in advance, God, for speaking to each of them, oh Lord. And we're forever grateful for our Mayor Jackie Warner. We ask for your continued protection upon her and her family. Not only her, Lord, all of her staff, all of the council members, Lord, we thank you for how you're shielding and protecting them from dangers seen and unseen. We're forever grateful also, Lord, for our first responders, who are always willing to put their lives in harm's way. We ask that you would keep your warring angels behind their backs, God, when danger presents itself and they don't see it. Thank you for how you shield their families and everyone connected with them, oh God. We just thank you for everything that you're doing. We're expecting miracles, even more miracles here in the town of Hope Mills here in 2019. We're thanking you in advance for that, Lord. We thank you for being involved in affairs of man, especially here in the town of Hope Mills, oh God. And now, Lord, as I have come to do the invocation, Lord, I ask, God, that you would endow all the more, the board members with your wisdom, God, that they would execute the things that are on the agenda. And we thank you in advance for everything that you're doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda is read.
Okay, I have a motion to approve our agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The very first thing on our agenda this evening is a proclamation that I have before me, and this is recognizing Hope Mills School of Choice Week, whereas all children in Hope Mills should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Hope Mills recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Hope Mills to be successful adults. Whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Hope Mills, whereas Hope Mills is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. Whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. Whereas Hope Mills has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. Whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, our Mayor Jackie Warner do hereby recognize January the 20th through 26th, 2019, as Hope Mills School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is a presentation by our County Manager Amy Cannon of proposed sales tax distribution agreement. This agreement is an interlocal agreement, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cannon. And if there's questions from our board, she does have, she is prepared to present. And I guess what would be interesting for our citizens here, since we have people that are not familiar with the agreement, we'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cannon so she can give us a presentation.
A history, yes. So I'm not sure if you would like for me to go through the presentation that we gave at the Mayor's Coalition. I can give you a little bit of history about the agreement. In 2002, based on some significant annexations by the city of Fayetteville, Cumberland County had lost on an annual basis $4 million in sales tax revenue. The city had further, larger annexations planned, so a working group was established. It included many mayors, it included staff from many of the agencies, Hope Mills, Spring Lake, and we worked over a 15-month period to develop an agreement, a sales tax sharing agreement that we thought met the needs of the community. Basically, the city of Fayetteville and the towns were able to retain 50% of the sales tax they gained upon an annexation because we realize municipalities have new responsibilities with annexations. On the opposite side, the county agreed to give up 50% of the sales tax, but not 100%. Counties have significant responsibilities as an arm of state government. We provide services to all 300,000 citizens, and those services are not diminished as a result of an annexation. The original agreement was a nine-year agreement, and it expired in 2013, and at that time, the Mayor's Coalition became the conduit for future discussions about the sales tax agreement. We've heard from the city of Fayetteville and the towns about the future agreement. And so the county, through our Finance Committee, and then the full Board of Commissioners, have offered a compromise agreement, and that is for, to establish a base year, a fiscal year 2020, and to freeze that distribution. And for future revenue sharing, the county would reduce its share from 50% to 40, and the municipalities would then share 60%. And so, that's what led to the presentation at the Mayor's Coalition. And that's a quick history. I hope that's helpful. I'd be happy to answer any questions or go through the full presentation, whatever your wishes are.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed sales tax distribution in our local agreement commencing July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2023.
Okay, I have a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor, if you'll signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. You did a great job, ma'am. That was quick. That's the quickest.
You convinced me.
(laughing). I just want to express my appreciation. The municipalities are very important to the Cumberland County, to the Commissioners and management as well. We're here to do all that we can to support you, and certainly would. I don't know if our Chairman Council has anything to say, but I wouldn't want to leave her out.
Thank you. I have a thank you to say to you, because this has been a long, hard road. The municipalities approved the agreement in 2014, but we had the, we had a big stumbling block. So, and we did, we wanted to be fair. But you do a good job of managing funds. We appreciate it. You are the first municipality to approve this agreement, and you have grown so much, and I'm not used to driving in the dark. I got lost. I was lost for about 40 minutes. I could not find my way. I got turned around on one-way streets and everything. You have a lot of development going on. But thank you so much, Commissioner Adams.
I defer to the Chairman.
Thank you. We want to get together with you again. We want to get to know you. Call on us when you need us. You can pick up the phone and call us, okay? You call me at any time. I do text. I do text. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
I've got one comment for you, Chair.
Okay.
And thank, thank you, Amy, for coming, and all of the county staff. My comment is this. I would like to call upon all the municipalities in Cumberland County to approve this agreement along with Hope Mills tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. We need that. We need it. That's a positive step. Thank you, Mayor.
And I think that it should be known that the two Commissioners that are here this evening have played an integral part in this, because Ms. Council chaired our commission that we had when we pulled a special committee in, and of course, Commissioner Adams has been involved all along the way. So we appreciate your work in getting us to this point. So thank you. And thank you for showing up and being here tonight to be a part of this approval. So I appreciate that, too.
Thank you. We are at your service.
Yes.
You.
I personally want to thank each and every one of you. Along with Mayor Warner, I've been on this ride since it started, worrying about where the next dollar was going to come from. And thank you for all your hard work and dedication and putting everything together. We didn't have much notice at our last meeting to approve anything. I mean, something's laying here, I want to read it. I want to study it. And that was where I was, what I was faced with, is I hadn't had the opportunity to look it over, because what I do up here is for the people of this town. So again, thank you very much, and maybe we can become a leader in leading other municipalities to jump on board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chairman, I live here. I live here, and I get lost sometimes.
Next, we have a presentation from Cumberland County Community Development, and this is their yearly report. You can come to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dee Taylor with Cumberland County Community Development, and I'd just like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come out and give you a brief update on community development matters. So as an entitlement jurisdiction, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, we all know as HUD, provides community development block grant or CDBG and home investment partnership, or home funds, to Cumberland County on an annual basis. So as part of meeting HUD's requirement to continue receiving funding, and while we're in the process of developing our annual action plan, which outlines the funding resources and how we plan to allocate those resources in our community, we wanted to make sure that we reached out to you, the town of Hope Mills, and make sure that we do include any feedback that you may have, since the town of Hope Mills is a participating municipality in our jurisdiction and has been since 1994. We just want to make sure we include any comments you may have. So during the preparation of our five-year strategic plan, we had identified made majority, I'm sorry, priority needs, which included expanding affordable housing, addressing homelessness, and of course, expanding any non-housing community development-related activities, which include public services, public facilities, and infrastructure. So we use our CDBG and home funds towards activities, which include owner-occupied housing rehabilitation, investor, owner-housing rehabilitation, homeless services, and again, public facilities and infrastructure. So in order for any activity to receive CDBG funding, it has to meet one of three national objectives, and that is benefit low-to-moderate income persons. We have, it has to either address a slum and blighted area or meet a urgent need. For home funding, it basically has to be an affordable housing activity that benefits low-to-moderate income persons. Now, for the current program year, HUD awarded Cumberland County approximately $825,000 in CDBG funds and approximately $399,000 in home funds. And we anticipate receiving the same level in the upcoming program year. And I know that may not sound like a whole lot, but in the past, most agencies or local units of government apply for these funds to just help leverage their current resources in the community. So just to give you an update on the amount of funding that has been invested in and around the Hope Mills area, so far, community development has invested approximately $6.8 million of CDBG and home funds for the residents with the Hope Mills address, basically. So that includes residents within the town of Hope Mills and in the surrounding area of Hope Mills. These activities include emergency or minor repair, substantial housing rehabilitation, down payment or closing costs towards, for a first-time home virus program, and rental rehabilitation program. This amount also includes six affordable housing developments totaling approximately $2 million. I also want to provide an update on hurricane-related matters. The last time I was here, I mentioned that the county received CDBG disaster-related funds from the state, and we are, our office is still accepting application for any resident that has not applied yet for CDBGDR funds to address home repairs or to try to apply for home repair reimbursement or small rental repairs. If they're interested in applying for these funds, they'll need to call the 211 number, and then they will set up an appointment with our office. Our office is responsible for conducting the intake, and we submit it to the state for further review for eligibility determination and award. It is a lengthy process, but you know, just, we just tell the applicants to just not give up and just go ahead and go through the process. I don't have any Hurricane Florence update. As you know, the state did ask for funding from the federal government, and of course, that information is still pending. And as soon as we receive any updates, we'll definitely inform our local communities. And again, if you have any questions, I will leave some pamphlets in the back, if that's okay. Our number, it will be located on the back of the pamphlet, as well as our website. And I just want to thank you again for this time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming this evening.
Sure. Thank you.
Bye. Next, we have no public hearings this evening. Next is public comments. And we do have one public comment signee, so Elizabeth Cooper. Would come to the microphone at this time.
Sorry, choir at church. It's not quite in your face like this. Okay. Elizabeth Cooper, 4413 Goldenrod Court, Parkton, North Carolina, but I am a Hope Mills resident. I'm here to touch on some of the discussion that was at the December 19 meeting. Much of it was spent on what the board's desired message was and concerns that their message was being corrupted. I contend it's not the board's message that needs to be heard. It is the voice of the citizens that continues to be dismissed. The following are examples of what I mean. On October 22, at the Board of Commissioner meeting, at 1 hour and 4 minutes, Commissioner Mitchell opined about how you subsidize the Parks and Recs Department by $1 million, which at our last meeting was clarified to be $800,000, but regardless. At 1 hour 9 minutes, the discussion turned to the fact that commercial development has been offsetting the losses of any property tax issues. Then at 1 hour 17 minutes, Item C, Commissioner Larson requested an ordinance requiring the presence of all five board members to consider the sale or long-term lease. Quote, "This applies to discussion or consideration of said, of sale or lease," per Meg Larson after discussion with Mr. Hartshog. And that comment ended at 1 hour 20 minutes. Jessie Bellflowers brought up the fact that it would require a proposal to be, could require, could mean a proposal would be continually pushed to the next agenda, as long as one or two people don't make the meeting, delaying public discussion, getting people a voice on vote, and voting indefinitely, which was not voted in at that meeting, but voted in the next meeting. So right there, you're, okay, we don't care about the public discussion. We're just, we only care that we have the ability to hear about it and time. Who cares? It's whenever we get around to it. Then we had the Parks and Recs Committee meeting on October 29. And at that meeting, Mr. Mike Seals, who is on the committee, stated that the discussion proposed about falling under Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Rec was actually a step forward of the process, and there should be contact made with Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation. So here we have the town of Hope Mills already discussing something that wasn't even brought up by anybody in your community, let alone by Fayetteville Cumberland. And then finally, we have the issue about, going back to the issue of the $1 million. I don't know of a single community that doesn't subsidize their parks and rec. It's part of what property taxes are for. It is part of why people move to this community. Yes, you should subsidize the parks and rec. It is worthwhile money, and it is why people come to this community. I don't understand why you have such angst over that money. What are you going to do with that money if it's not going to Parks and Rec? More pay raises? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Next, for our consent agenda, I'll read the consent agenda. If there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we can do so. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the November 5, 2018 regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the December 3, 2018 regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the December 17, 2018 regular meeting. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the December 20, 2018 special meeting. Consideration of approval of Executive Assistant Deputy Clerk Tiffany Gilstead's attending the 2019 Clerk Certification Institute. The classes are split into four weeks, one per quarter, and each week requires five nights in a hotel. The tuition is $2,600, and this item is included in the budget. Consideration of acceptance of Budget Amendment Number Two for insurance proceeds in the amount of $11,975. Are there anything that you'd like moved to consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we go to old business, and the first thing under old business is discussion of external investigation requests. And I don't know if, is this something, Mr. Hartshog?
Sure.
Okay.
So I, as we talked about at the last meeting, I was working on getting a name of a potential investigator from the League of Municipalities. I did get a recommendation from John Phelps, who's the Associate General Counsel, and Kim Hibbard, who is the General Counsel of the League of Municipalities. They have recommended Jim Colley with the law firm Colley and Priggin. He does a lot of municipal work. I believe he's a town attorney for at least two towns, I believe, Kinston and one other one. Very familiar with this area of the law related to municipal land sales. And the League highly recommended him as someone who would do a good job in this investigation. I believe his rate, I believe, is 275 an hour. He anticipated he would do individual interviews with each of the board members, probably myself, Town Manager Adams, and whoever else we think he may need to interview. Probably involve at least one trip to Hope Mills, maybe two, depending on how long the interviews go. But I believe he would do a good job.
A discussion or questions for Mr. Hartshog?
Do we need a motion for you to move forward, Mr. Hartshog?
Yes.
Make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion to move forward with an external investigation. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Be 4 to 1. You move forward, did you move forward, Ms. Commissioner? Yes, 5-0 then? Yes, sir. Okay. Is there, would there also, just as, since I continue to be the one that is brought up in the newspaper, which Mr. Mullen, it is the entire board, it's not just Mayor Warner. But you will be also talking to Fayetteville Cumberland County Economic Development Corporation, because that's the one that has had a lot of allegations toward them. And I will tell you that I look forward to this investigation as Mayor of Hope Mills. I think it's important that the mayor represents Hope Mills and does a good job with that, and I feel comfortable that you'll find when this investigation is over, that there has not been anything done out of the ordinary or did not follow protocol. So, and will this start immediately?
I'm not sure when he could start, but I will contact him and tell him that we would like to get it started as soon as possible.
All right.
I imagine it will start very quickly.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, next on our agenda is new business. It's consideration of setting a public hearing date of January 22, 2019 for annexation 2018-03, which is Dever Circle Apartments Phase 2.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we need to check this stormwater issue out before we go forward?
Well, these individual units have stormwater, as well as the ones that are being, that have been constructed on Sumner. They have stormwater.
Why can't we tie in the problem at Rockfish and Summer and Dever back to that outfall?
I don't know how we could involve private property with this.
It's still our water, you know?
I don't know if, that we could, we'll have to look into that. The only other option is delaying, you know, we could maybe delay a date on setting the public hearing. But you've, you've gotten the annexation request. By law, we have to accept it, and by law, we have to set a public hearing date at some point. I'm not sure how long we can delay that. Maybe.
Really, we should try not to delay it any more than you have to.
I have just a thought that's on my mind, especially when we went through the meeting a while ago.
I would be hesitant to delay it to a point where it's unknown exactly when we'll have an answer on that other issue. And so I hate to have it sort of in indefinite limbo.
Mr. McLaughlin, I'm going to have him get up and address an issue real quick with that.
With respect to this development, this is Phase 2 of the Dever Circle development. Each one of these developments are required to treat their runoff individually on the property itself.
On their property.
Another thing I would caution is if we delay this, the development is going to move forward, because it's currently in the county. If we delay the public hearing, we also basically remove our ability to have control over it. I do know the Seaweed and Carrey issue is a very serious issue, but I think this particular development should be treated completely separate, because it is being required to treat this runoff as a part of the approval of the development itself.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Dan, does this require a motion?
Yes.
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 Okay. Then I'll make that motion to set the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to set the public hearing date as January 22 for annexation 2018-03, Dever Circle Apartments Phase 2. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
That'd be a resolution 2019-1.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Next is consideration of Commissioners' proposed budget items for discussion at 2019 budget retreat and scheduling a date for the 2019 budget retreat.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. What we're requesting is, in lieu of having a separate meeting to kind of discuss what your, what your projects or goals for this coming year are, that you send those to us as soon as possible, and no later than Friday, January the 25. And that'll give staff about a month to work on getting the pertinent information for us to be able to make a presentation at our proposed budget retreat. And what we're also asking is that instead of holding our budget retreat on a, all day on a Saturday, if you all would cons- if you all would consider holding it on that Friday, March the 1st. Normally, we would schedule it for the first Saturday of March, and due to the availability of staff and having to be there all day, we're just respectfully asking if we could look at doing it on Friday.
I hate to say it, I just recalled that my son is getting married on March the 2nd, that Saturday.
That Saturday, oh goodness.
I don't know if any time would be required of me. It'd be, we'd be done by about four or five.
Well, if we, if we, either day, March, the Friday?
I can't do it Saturday, that's for sure. That's when they're getting married.
Yeah, okay. No, we're, what we're looking at is starting at about 8:30 and concluding at no later than 3:00 PM. 2:30 would be preferable.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Melissa, where's the location?
We're gonna have it at Rockfish Camp again. Same, same location as last year. That's worked very well. It allows for public to come, you know, and kind of gets us out of here a little bit, but it's not too far. It's within six miles, so.
My only reservation about a Friday versus Saturday is availability to the public to come. And I feel strong about Saturdays, because it, it's in, it doesn't involve the work week. And really, this, the retreat is for the public, you know, to attend. That's just my feeling about it. I'm kind of torn both ways, as long as the public has access. But that's why I feel strong about Saturdays, is because of, it opens the door for more public attendance.
And can I, can I offer one suggestion, too, is we've normally have not had a large number turn out, even on Saturday. But could this not be videoed so that it could also have, we could have access to it, so it could be just like we do our regular meetings now?
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking that would be a solution, is, and then more people would have access, because really, I know that the last two retreats, we had minimal public that attended. But this would be a way of, everything that would be discussed then would be on tape.
March 1st does not work for me.
Okay.
I won't be in town.
March 1st, and so March 2nd, neither one of those works.
Would y'all consider either March the 8th or March the 9th?
March 9th won't work for me.
Friday's the 8th, I guess.
Yeah, Friday's the 8th.
Fridays are difficult for me, because I'm usually not in town.
And the February's too soon?
Yeah, Thursday the 28th, February the 28th.
Would that give staff enough time? I mean, it's just, would be, just be a day sooner.
I will make that work.
Would the Thursday, the 28th of February work?
That's not gonna work for me, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
No, that won't work for me. I mean, I prefer Saturdays, Mayor, but I mean, I can do a Friday or Saturday.
Saturday is much easier for me on a Saturday.
I can do either one, just Monday through Thursday.
My schedule's too hard going back and forth to Raleigh.
Saturday the 9th.
Or last Saturday in February?
The last Saturday in February is the 23rd.
The 23rd?
February 23rd, I don't have a conflict at all. No, I'm pretty flexible. The only thing I have on the 9th is my granddaughter's birthday, that we're not gonna be in town.
That's, that's only giving us three weeks to prepare, the 23rd.
Well, could we, could you back up the date that you want things in place from us? In other words, instead of the 25th, if we can get our, our suggestions and goals to you on the 18th, would that work for everyone? That'd give you another week by backing it up. Would that work, Mr. Holland, would that work?
Would that work?
If we, if instead of having the stuff to them by January 25th, if we had it to them by January 18th, and then that would give us a time so that we could...
That gives us an extra week.
And then we could do it on the 20th, are we looking at the Saturday, the 23rd?
I will be here.
Would it work on Saturday, 23rd?
Why don't we just look at March 9th? Is that not good?
March 9th is not good for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
16th. That's kind of pushing it out.
Yeah, we need it sooner than that, so we can get it, because whatever we suggest and whatever we go over, then they've got to have time to build that budget and bring it back to us, and we have to have public hearings. So, we don't want to go too much farther into, to March, I don't think.
I'd say we do it, Mayor, I'd say we do it before March 9th. That would be the cut.
All right, well, we know March 2nd's not gonna work for Mayor Protem, and if Friday's not gonna work for Commissioner Larson. So, you want to look at, would that Saturday, the 23rd, we'll go back to the Saturday date, would that work? Because the 22nd wouldn't work for Commissioner Larson either, because it's a Friday.
23rd's good for me.
I thought that's what we were discussing, the 23rd.
That's what we were.
Okay, yeah, I thought that's what we were discussing.
For the budget retreat, would it work for the 23rd for you?
The 23rd?
23rd.
Okay. She will not be here on 23rd.
Okay.
All righty.
You all nail this down, just let me know what day we're gonna meet.
What, all right, let's do it, let's, let's solve this a little bit. Commissioner Bellflowers, what day of the week, besides Saturday, is a good day for you?
Friday or Saturday.
Friday or Saturday, so that will, so that's not gonna work.
But I prefer Saturday.
Okay, well, that's not gonna work for Commissioner Larson, because Friday's not good for her, and...
Friday or Saturday's good for me, except for the 23rd.
Okay, so you won't be in town the 23rd. So, this is tough.
If we, all right, if we move it out to, no, March, Drew, is the 16th gonna be too late? We do Saturday, March the 16th?
I mean, we can. The only thing is, by that time, I'm a month into the budget process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, to have it balanced by the end of April, that's just, you know, it just tightens the window.
March the 9th, was that not?
It's my granddaughter's birthday.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, I would say I could, if you want, schedule for the night, and then I'll work out the time that I need to be away. I can...
Well, that would be a good compromise. Just do it on the 9th?
Yeah.
If everybody's available, we could do that.
It's up to y'all.
16th? We can make the 16th work.
Let's try to make the 16th work. I make a motion, we have it March 16th, at the requested time of the town manager, which was 8:30 till 3:00 approximately. Is that correct?
Yeah, 8:30 till about 2:30 or 3 o'clock, yeah.
Okay, at Camp Rockfish.
Yep.
Is that everybody's calendar?
March 16th.
Okay.
We got it, March 16th. And all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
Okay.
All righty. Next thing on our agenda is, and, and we're still gonna keep it at the 25th for them to get their items to you?
Yes.
Okay, so still got January 25th to get whatever you'd like to be part of that discussion on the 16th. All right, next, consideration of purchase of new phones. Let me back up just a second, because I know this happened last year. Make sure you get your, your proposals to Commissioner Adams, and don't come with proposals that day. This is the reason for giving them the opportunity now, is so they can come with telling you how much it's gonna cost in March.
Okay.
So, that's, that's important.
Got it.
All right, next is consideration of purchase of a new phone system for Town Hall. It requires approval of Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Three in the amount of $15,400. Cost is $15,358.97 for the purchase and installation, and then $1,075.50 per month for ongoing service. And I guess who is gonna, wants to talk about this? We know we gotta have it, because we know the system's been down.
We've gotta have it.
Madam Mayor, I just have some questions. And I asked them earlier, but I'm, wanna ask them on the record. And this is for Drew.
Okay.
Yep.
It's really questions of clarity. In our, in our approved CIP last year, we had this phone, a system identified at a replacement cost of $30,000. Okay, and, and with this cost, it's $15,358.97 with an additional $1,075.50 per month. My question is, the $30,000 that was, that was planned for the CIP, does that include the monthly fee or not?
It does not. What's in the CIP is the capital cost only, which is the purchase amount.
Just for the equipment.
Right. The, the $1,075 a month is just gonna be our monthly phone service bill, and it's gonna be that amount every month, unless we add to the system at some point in the future. Our current bill that we're getting now varies each month, anywhere from $1,000 to $1,300, $1,400. It's different every month. This bill will be consistent, the same amount every month. It's not gonna change. It's not gonna be 13 this month, 12 the next, $11,000 the month after that. So, it's gonna be a one-time charge of the $15,358 for installation and to purchase the equipment. They'll get installed. Right now, they're saying it could be up to three months before it's installed. I'm gonna talk with them tomorrow if it's approved, and see if we can shorten that timeframe as soon as they can get in here, because we are having phone issues, and get installed as soon as possible. The quote that's in the CIP from, that CIP was done actually a year and a half ago, when we did that one. This is the same company. It's actually the same quote. It's just been revised where, between myself and our IT department, we spoke with the phone company, and we can utilize some of the current portions of our existing phone system in with this, so we don't have to buy everything that was on their list that makes up that $30,000. That's if we replaced everything. Some of the aspects that we have in our phone system are still okay and can be used. So, when we deducted all that out, the $15,358 is all that's left.
Well, Drew, the main reason I ask that is because when you add up the monthly fees, you're at $80,000, and the CIP had $30,000.
Well, you don't include operating expenses in your CIP as capital.
Yeah, that's the reason I asked the question.
So, that's just regular expense of having a phone system. That's the monthly charge of, of having it expense-wise.
Of just the hardware piece.
And we're paying more than that now.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's gonna be a savings either way.
Well, Madam Mayor, if no one else has any questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Does that just include the hardware service for the municipality, or are the cellphones in yet connected in any way?
This is separate from the cellphones.
Yeah.
And the system that we're using just for information purposes, there's 20 other towns that use this same system that we're getting, and is recommended by the North Carolina League of Municipalities. So, we bid it out, the current provider that we use now, they're actually still working on their bid, because they know it's extremely high. And the quote that they gave us to upgrade the system that we currently have with our current provider, was it Thursday?
Yeah, it was last Thursday.
Thursday, they said it'd be $95,000.
Amazing.
And I said, no.
No, thank you. Thanks.
And they came out today to reassess the system. They're trying to get it lower, but they're, they're not gonna be able to do it, so.
It's not fair to them to know the bid that we have that we're talking about. So, I would suggest we cut those bids up, if they're, if they're gonna be higher.
They're gonna be extremely higher.
And what's the, what's the warranty on the hardware?
Uh, it's all completely under warranty. And actually, if something breaks, they replace it.
Within a five-year period?
The whole time that we have it.
During the contract, during the maintenance contract?
It's part of the contract, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Madam Mayor, I'll go ahead and finish the motion.
Okay.
Motion is to purchase approval of, of a new phone system for Town Hall in Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Three in the amount of $15,400. Cost is $15,358.97 for purchase and installation, and then $1,075.50 per month for the ongoing service contract.
Okay, I have a motion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Regarding the Lake Bulkhead Project, a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting was held at the lake with interested contractors on December the 21st, and the bid opening is scheduled for January 11th. Johnson Street Sidewalk update, project date of March 1st, 2019 for environmental completion. Engineers are continuing to work with CSX on right-of-way issues with their utility and site improvement divisions. The projected contract award date is May the 21st. Rockfish Road Sidewalk, McGill Engineering and NCDOT field changes have been approved. McGill Engineering is finalizing those changes, and the contractor is ready to restake and resurvey and break ground. Eel Ladder, Watson Electric was on site December the 17th to assess the damage. Their safety team is evaluating the creek access. And again, a reminder, this repair is FEMA reimbursable. Parks and Rec Building Repairs, all major repairs are completed. There are a few minor items that need to be completed, such as painting the repaired sheetrock and installing some of the lighting, or reinstalling some of the lighting. We are tentatively working on trying to open the building on Monday, January the 14th, but we'll know more after tomorrow if that's going to be feasible. If not, the target date is Tuesday, January the 22nd. Schnabo Engineering is going to be scheduling their next inspection on the dam sometime this month. The lake will be lowered for a resident maintenance period this month, but date to be, a date to be determined. Public Works Director Don Sisko has recommended that the lowering for the lake maintenance for the residents to do their, their required maintenance on their piers to coincide with the Bulkhead Project, so that we only change the level one time. The lake residents will have their piers and docks, the lake residents that have piers and docks will be notified once we determine the date that the Bulkhead construction will commence. Golf Course, Public Works Director Don Sisko and I have been trying to get an appointment with Mr. Troy Baker of NCDOT to discuss the possible requirements for a driveway permit off of Golf View onto the Golf Course property. We have been in touch with Mr. Baker, and he has indicated that he is waiting on clarification of the proposed project on Golf View and Black Bridge Road, and the impact that it may have on a proposed driveway before scheduling a date to meet with us. I'm gonna follow up this week and see if he's made any leeway with that, so that we can try to get an appointment with him. Dunland Signs has informed me that the sign for the proposed Gary Dev Memorial Building will be completed this Friday, January the 11th. We are working with the family to schedule a date for the unveiling. The proposed projected timeframe for that would be early February. So, keep that on the back, back of your minds there, that we'll be scheduling a ceremony for unveiling that sometime in early February. Staff continues picking up limb and tree piles for Hurricane Florence removal. The contractor began December 11th removing the debris from the golf course. The Knuckle Boom Truck is scheduled to return to service tomorrow, January the 8th, and the last day for storm-related pickup will be Tuesday, January the 15th. Once we know tomorrow that the truck is back in service, once we know for sure that we have the truck back in service, we will post the final date for storm-related pickup on the website and social media. The closing on the Jernigan Property, the property that was donated to the town, that was, the closing was held on December the 27th, and we're going to have a memorandum of understanding on the agenda for the consent agenda on the next meeting with the agreement that should a park be made out of that, we will name it after her mother, which is what she asked. Work has resumed on the TJ Robinson Life Center, and we have been in... Work has resumed on the TJ Robinson Life Center, and we have been informed that it appears that it is fully funded to complete the project. So, we shall see how that goes. And all inspections by the, by Cumberland County and the Town of Hope Mills have been completed at the Crossing's Assisted Living Facility, and they are currently waiting on State Licensing Division in order to open the facility. And that is all that I have for my manager's report.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
From Melissa. The meeting, the suggested meeting with McAdams Group on the eleventh of February.
Mm-hmm.
My question here is, is the goal to have the comp plan completely finished for submission for the part of grant by one May?
Well, that's been the goal all along, whether, whether they would be coming back to you all, or whether they would have been presenting, um, their recommendations to the Parks and Rec first. Originally, Ms. Cotter had indicated that the way they thought the process should work was that the next process would be have a meeting with Parks and Rec Committee and then have a public input meeting, and then make a final presentation to you all. After our, um, phone conversation on Friday, um, she and I bounced a few ideas back and forth, and we both agree that we think that it's more feasible for them to bring their recommendations to you all first. That way, it gives them a little more time to make some changes. They wanna make sure they're tracking on the, in the right direction, that you all want them to.
Agree, agree.
So, um, so we've decided, um, that it probably would work better for them to come and make a, a presentation to you all first, and then what they would like to do is schedule on the same day, but at different times, the, because they're, they're really kind of, um, well, they, they are having an extra meeting by doing this, but, um, they would like to have, um, the, the public input session and the Parks and Rec Committee meeting on the same day, so that will alleviate some of their travel. It doesn't have to be at the same time, but different times.
Right, right.
And we can work all that out, um, you know, prior to, but that, that is the goal, and they have some recommendations for the part of grant, um, that she will be talking to you all about.
Well, and that was, that was my concern, was that when, when I saw the, the eleventh, eleventh February date, is that we're getting awful close to that window.
Right.
Uh, of a, of a deliverable.
Right. We need to, I, I believe she's indicated that we need to have the, the, the plans adopted in April.
Right. And, and that, and we're tracking with that plan.
Right, so, yeah.
And McAdams is going to assist the town on submission for the part of grant as well.
Correct. If, if you all, if you all, if the board approves. To go move forward with the submission, yes.
Yeah. Well, and then, so that brings us to April. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming that the deliverable will be before the board at our first meeting in April.
Well, we're, we're kind of looking at doing it at the retreat.
That's even better.
The final, the final at the retreat is what we were looking at.
Hmm. That's excellent. That's excellent planning. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just had two questions. For the Bulkhead Construction, do we have any idea as to timeline on that? How, I mean, how long that will take?
Um, Mr. Sisko and I have been bouncing that back and forth, and, um, we have absolutely no idea what the timeframe of that is gonna be. There's so many variables. Um, the weather is going to play a huge role in it, because as you know, when we have rain, but even though we'll lower the lake level for the work to be done, when we have rain, the lake level rises.
Right.
So, you know, depending on what type of weather we get, um, the also, the other thing that's gonna impact it is once the bid is awarded, um, then they have to have time to order their materials, and, um, I, I'm not sure that I can say this correctly, but it's something to do with the type of.
Preservatives.
Preservatives that, that are in the materials that may take a little bit longer for them to order, so it may not initially start right away. There may be a month or so before the work gets started, and I'm also afraid to, I think the Festival Committee was gonna discuss this this evening, but I believe that this project is going to impact the, the proposed festival date down at the lake of May. I think there was, I can't remember the exact dates that were proposed for two, two days in May for the, the Lake Festival, but I don't believe that this project will be finished in time.
I mean, there'll be plenty of time for the lakefront owners to make their repairs.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it'd be plenty of time.
But now, in like twenty-twenty.
Right.
We're gonna try to nail down a date in twenty-twenty, right? Uh, 'cause, you know, if you try to get a contractor to work on your pier.
Right.
He ain't showing up tomorrow.
Right.
I promise you that.
No, we'll, we'll have, once we, um, once we get a better, aboard the bid and get a better idea of a possible timeline of when it may start, um, that lake level's gonna be lowered for that, basically, the entire project, so that.
And we include the county residents that are affected by that that live on the lake as well. Do we notify them?
That we can, yes, that if they have a.
Are they backs out of the lake?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, a, a dock and a pier will, will notify any, any of the residents that.
And just at some point, um, I think it'd be great if we could get your report on social media, but that would be up to you guys, but it's a very informative report that we get every, and you do an awesome job at it.
Okay.
But, um, and I think it summarizes everything.
We can look at posting it on social media.
Well, and I think that YouTube, it's on YouTube, and they're picking up your voice now, so.
That helps.
Yeah, it works. I mean, they're getting it.
Okay.
But we can share it if it's on social media.
Right.
You know.
Okay.
Question two is, and I know that the Lake Festival Committee is gonna be, uh, we've got some members sitting in here now.
Yeah.
They're gonna be concerned because of the types of activities they're planning.
The cardboard race, yeah.
And, and plus some of the other things, they're already in the, the, they're already getting some of that stuff done, and it's, um, you know, the people coming and the, the events themselves. It's supposed to be May seventeenth and eighteenth is the two dates, and that's a Friday and Saturday. And I think we even looked at carrying it over to Sunday, too, May seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. So, we're shrinking the five days into three, uh, but, um, that's gonna be.
Yeah, I, I just have a real concern with that going on with the construction of the Bulkhead. I just don't know how the two are gonna work.
Well, I guess what we need to do is if we can get, if we nail down something so that they don't stop what they're doing, but if they, um, can get some, you know, I know that, uh, from my experience with the Bulkhead that we've, part of, uh, that what happened was once they got started, if the weather's good, they just, they moved right along. It moved really quickly.
Mm-hmm.
But, of course, weather's gonna play a part in what we have going on.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Two things, if I may. I wasn't able to attend the, the meeting tonight because we had another meeting in here.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know what they, what they did, what they discussed in there. Um, the second thing is, before we set a permanent date for the dedication of the Gary Dove Building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I want us, we're gonna check, the youth program's gonna check with, um, JP Riddle Stadium.
Okay.
It may not even be available anymore because it's FTCC now, I believe, or, well, yeah, I believe it's FTCC has that field now. So, if the opening ceremony's gonna be at Briar Park, I think that would be the perfect time in April. Mike Sinem can tell you more about that than I can, 'cause he has hundreds of friends that frequent that park during baseball season, especially opening day, and I think that would be a, a real good time to dedicate that building, but I'll speak with Mr. Armstrong and see what the indication is. And him being a good friend of Mr. Dove's, I think they might suggest it be held again at Briar Park this year. Nothing wrong with what happened at JP Riddle Stadium, it was, it was nice.
Mm-hmm.
But the county doesn't have that anymore. It belongs to, to the technical community college. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Under our reminder, something that's important is Wednesday, um, January tenth, at three PM, we'll be meeting at the Parish House, and it has been requested that you wear, um, protective shoes. In other words, don't come with, uh, anything that you, uh, will, just in case. And also, uh, it has been requested that you might, for those that have any type of allergies, you may want to wear a mask. And the reason for that, again, is because we're going inside a building that has been closed up, and they, there's some concerns, so that's, um, but that would be the Parish House. The museum, um, the, and the reason for a three o'clock special meeting is because there's no power in the Parish House. The meeting, um, will move from there to the, uh, home on Trade Street, and that does have power, so we'll be fine there. Um, the own, the other, um, important meeting that we're having, I'm not gonna go through all of these, but the other special meeting that we're having is Monday, January fourteenth, and that's, uh, at seven PM, and that's the sign workshop. This is a special meeting, um, in reference to the sign ordinance, and at that meeting, we're, um, inviting anyone that would be affected by that sign ordinance, so we're hoping that some of the people that, um, the businesses in town that have signs will attend that meeting so that we can have some input. Um, the committee meetings are there. Um, the other thing is Town Hall will be closed on January twenty-first, uh, to celebrate Martin Luther King Holiday. Uh, next, we have our committee liaison updates. The first would be Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell with the Historic Preservation Commission.
Now, I report everything at the last meeting and, other than our meeting, um, over there on the tenth. Uh, I hope everybody can make it that's available. That's open to the public.
Okay. Uh, one question for, and I guess this is something that you can relate to us. I've had several people ask about if we want, if we had an opportunity to donate or loan things for the museum. I think they feel like we're getting to that point of being able to open it up, 'cause they've seen some things happening on Trade Street. So, the question is, do we have an inventory of what we have, and do we know what we may want? Is there some way we could get that out so people that have items in Hope Mills that, um, they'd like to loan or donate? Um, so, I guess that'd just be the next meeting, you could ask that, or, and I guess the inventory would be, I know we, we set it up so that they could do an inventory, um, down at the s, the storage facility.
Storage.
And I don't know how that has, um, moved, but I do know that some of those items and some of those materials we might could, would not wanna duplicate. Uh, next, we have Commissioner Edwards and the Lake Advisory Committee.
Our next meeting will be the fifteenth of this month.
Okay, so they have not met since our last meeting. Okay, Commissioner Legg, the Parents Committee, and the Festival Committee.
Well, I didn't attend the Festival Committee tonight because of the early meeting in here, and we haven't had a Parents Committee meeting, uh, since December, I believe it was.
Okay. Commissioner Larson, the Parks and Rec Committee.
We meet January twenty-eighth at six-thirty, January twenty-eighth.
Commissioner Bell Flowers, Commit, Veterans Committee in Rulak.
Neither has met since our last meeting, and Veterans Affairs Commission will meet at the end of the month.
Deal that.
No meetings, okay. All righty then. Um, and of course, the Mayor's Coalition has met. We had a special meeting, and that meeting was to go over the inter-local agreement, uh, that the board approved this evening, um, and that meeting was held, um, in reference to making sure that we had public, uh, input, not necessarily input, but make sure the public knew about it and, and the newspaper was there. Next, we have staff comments. I'll start with Ms. Darling.
Nothing.
Okay. Ms. Adams, any further?
Nothing, nothing.
Mr. Hartsaw?
Nothing.
All right, official comments. Do we have any official comments this evening? I'll start with, um, Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and hanging out with us on a Monday night. It's eight oh five. I think, I think we're getting out early. I'd like to congratulate our board for doing two things tonight. One, we approved the sales tax revenue stream, which is very healthy and helpful for our budget. The second thing, we saved the taxpayers money tonight by approving a much cheaper phone system for our town. Instead of a repair, uh, Band-Aid that was about to happen, we've got a, a better, improved system. So, that money will, will be definitely saved. And other than that, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards?
No, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Uh, we just had some discussions, uh, with, uh, Chairwoman Counsel and, um, Commissioner Adams about us having some kinda get-together, which would be open to the public as well with our county commissioners.
That's good.
To see how we could all collaborate together.
That's good.
I think Commissioner Adams said something about food and.
Yeah, a lunch, a luncheon.
Something like.
That is good.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if they can make it on a Saturday like our budget retreat, but, or we can have something on a, whichever day would fit everybody's schedule.
We'll reach out.
At some time in the near future.
We'll reach out to them and try to, I'll give them, if that date does not work the day of our retreat, then possibly what I can do is, you know, get a couple of other dates from them and then let you all know.
That'd be great.
What they, what they say.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And on that same note, I know that we mentioned at our last, uh, strategic planning session that we would do, um, or try to invite our legislative delegation in order to come to that meeting. Uh, I think it would be important if we, if nothing more, we could invite the entire delegation, but if we can't get the entire delegation, to at least get those that represent Hope Mills primarily. Uh, and again, that could be tied into the commissioners, however, their time might be, um, more difficult to schedule during the daytime. They did go on session on Monday evenings, and then, of course, a lot of times, they're, they're home on Fridays, but we just have to see, but that would be a recommendation would be to tie, or tie them into it also.
Okay.
They might have the sixth district figured out by then, maybe.
Yeah, maybe by then.
Maybe.
Maybe by then. Uh, Commissioner Legg?
Um, yes.
Skip me. I'm not, I go that in and back.
All right, Jill?
Yes, that's, I always do, but I.
No, I'm sorry.
I didn't skip you. I'm saving the best for last.
I think we made some giant steps tonight toward the problem with, um, the flooding. I know we made some giant steps with the tax retreat or tax resolution, so I hope it works out for everyone involved. Only concern that we might have is what happens way down the road, but I think that's covered in there as well. So, I hope you all have a, a good new year, a great new year. So.
Okay. Commissioner Larson?
I agree. The flooding was a good meeting. It was good, even though DOT wasn't here, so hopefully we can get that rolling quick and, uh, try to get a temporary solu, you know, solution for them quickly. Um, and Dan, as, as far as the, I probably should've mentioned this back in the investigation tab, but, um, we didn't talk about whether, uh, he will come here and meet us first, or, um, or if, how he's gonna wanna do that, and I, I would assume you'll get back with us as soon as you're able to touch base with him?
I will. I'll, I'll, in fact, I'll call him when we're done with the meeting. He had another board meeting he was attending tonight, but I think he said he would be done early enough, so I'll, I'll call him tonight and figure that out. I, I do think it probably would be a good idea to start with interviews, to get a sense of things before looking at documents.
Okay. Good deal. Thanks for coming out, everyone. Okay.
I do want to remind you on our January twenty-second meeting that we're gonna have a Cub Scout, or not, a Scout troop here, and what they're gonna be here for is to meet with our, we have some Scouts here this evening also, but we got a Scout troop that's gonna be here in order to meet with our Mayor's Youth Leadership Group at six, and then they're gonna stay for the meeting, and they're going to, um, lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, but then they're also gonna be, uh, earning their, uh, it's part of their civics badge so that they can move up to "we" below. So, I want you to know how important it is that we support our Scouts. I've had two before this meeting tonight, uh, Eagles, that are working on their Eagle Scout project that wanna do something with the town, so I think the more we can get our youth involved with our town and the more we can get these Eagle Scouts helping us with projects, we benefit, and, and then we benefit from the interaction with our youth. So, appreciate you young men being here this evening and, and your, uh, leader, because I think, again, you get to see the workings of what happens in, uh, a town meeting. I wanna thank everyone for being here this evening, and also want you to know that hopefully everybody'll get home in time to see Clemson beat Alabama.
Motion to adjourn.